We're gonna go ahead and get started and with today's meeting. And with that, I want to call the meeting to order of the March 12, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting. And with that, will Commissioner Work lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and have Roe call.
Good morning, Commissioner Getzelman.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Gomez.
Here.
Commissioner Deal. Absent. Commissioner Hartzell.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
And Commissioner Monsalve and Commissioner Shaw are absent. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I believe this is the place where we notify the public on how to participate, either through Zoom or through email.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for joining today. For members of the public who are participating in today's commission meeting via either for phone or online platform via Zoom, you can participate during public comment from the Zoom platform by raising your hand, opening the reactions button at the bottom of your screen, and click the raise hand icon, and then do the same to go ahead and lower. On your mobile or landline, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Another way to participate during public comment during the hearing is to send an email on an item to PChearingComments@countyofmonterey.gov. This email address is also on the agenda for today. We do monitor that email address in real time, and we do our best during the meeting and during items to check it. However, there's no guarantee that we will capture everything coming through email now that the meeting has begun. When it is your turn to participate during public comment, if you are on the Zoom platform, you will be given the opportunity to unmute yourself. You do so by clicking the microphone icon at the bottom of your screen to mute and unmute. If you are on the phone, you can mute and unmute by pressing star six. We also, the Planning Commission is pleased to announce that we are participating in a Wordly pilot program for interpretation services. To utilize the Wordly during today's meeting, you can scan the provided QR code, which is up on the screen, or access the meeting via the link on the screen as well. Once you're logged in, select your preferred language and click on Attend to Join. If you're in the chambers, please use headphones or see the clerk, who's right up here at the front, to use a listening device. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And for the record, Commissioner Deal is present on the dais now. Thank you. Now, as we move into the public comments section, this is a time set aside for the public to comment on a matter that is not on the agenda. And then if either you're in the chambers or on Zoom, you have about three minutes. So if anybody in the chambers would like to step up, if not, do we have anybody in Zoom?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. Now we move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's Agenda Additions, Deletions, and Corrections. And then staff?
For the record, we received additional correspondence, which was received and distributed by email and available at today's meeting for PLN 240234, which is item number three.
And that material would be on the table on the side? Is there any extra material?
The PowerPoints for each of the items being presented today are also on the side table on the side of the chambers.
Okay, thank you. This is a time set aside for Commissioner comments and requests. So at this time, Commissioners? Seeing none, Madam Secretary?
Yeah, thank you. Just a little out of place, but on behalf of the Commissioners for comments, I did want to make a brief public announcement. There have been some fraudulent emails going out from, sent as if they are from the Planning Commission, signed by myself, Chief of Planning, requesting that invoices be paid. We appreciate to our applicants who have shared it with us. They're fairly sophisticated in that they're referencing agenda item numbers and the emails of the actual applicants. So I just wanted to make an opportunity on the record. Should anyone receive such an email, please advise the county, send them forward. We are aware and doing our best to get, hopefully get on top of those and hope that nobody is, loses any money in the scam. Thank you.
Thank you for that very important information. And with that, we will go to approval of consent calendar. And we have, I believe, one item under the approval of consent calendar. With that, staff, will you have any?
I think just you can ask if anyone else wants to pull a comment on anything on the consent calendar.
Okay. Does, does anybody want to pull on any item from consent calendar? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I didn't actually want to pull anything, but I'd like to ask staff that when we only have one item, it seems like it's an extra step to put it on consent. So we could just deal with the item. And in this case, resignations are, is a good example of where I would like to know that we're going to send letters of appreciation. I don't want to pull the item from the agenda to do that, but it would be simpler for me if we just had that as an item. We could then make any remarks we wanted to make about the service of that individual and then proceed beyond that. So I'm happy to hear from staff in terms of, I guess I do want to pull it. I guess I do want to pull it just so we know that we are taking that action to recognize the contribution of those folks.
Yeah, and I do want to thank our, thank our board clerks there, or excuse me, Commission clerks. They do send out appreciation letters for that service and absolutely appreciate the input from Commissioner Deal to have the opportunity as well to thank and recognize those individuals for that time and served on those advisory committees. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any, I'll open the public hearing and anybody from the public or from Zoom that would like to make a comment on this particular item? If not, then I'm closing public hearing and we bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to remark on Mr. Borelli's service because he joined us as a person who had been a part-time resident for a number of years and had moved here full-time and wanted to mark this as his way to begin a contribution to his local neighborhood. And I'd just like to highlight that for all of those in the, in the listening public who might be considering that they, for some reason, aren't eligible to come and serve in this way and say, this person came, he was a breath of fresh air, he did a whole lot of outreach with his community to try to bring people together, brought that committee from, I think, four or five up to full, almost full strength, and really added a lot in the short, I think it's six years or so that he was there, added a lot to that whole opportunity to gain the public interest, the public information and input that we really need. So I want to make sure that the letter of appreciation highlights his, it's a kind of courage to come forward in an established community if you're not a person who's been there forever. And he did that, and we appreciate it. And I would, with that, I would be happy to say that with regret, I accept his resignation and hope the Commission would do so too, with the understanding that there would be the letter we talked about.
So I believe that's a motion. And do we need a second? Mr. Mendoza, second at the motion. And if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. With that, we move on to scheduled matters. And we have PLN 210068-AMD2, Director Wardens, and Vestreman of All Saints Parish, All Saints Day School item. With that, staff, if you're ready to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Steve Mason to present PLN 210068, Amendment Number Two for All Saints Day School. The project site is at 8060 Carmel Valley Road in the Carmel Valley Master Plan area. It's about four and a half miles inland from the Highway One junction. The project parcel is 29 and a half acres and is split zoned with the Western Third approximately being public quasi-public zoned with design control, site plan review, and residential allocated zoning overlays. The Eastern two-thirds of the parcel is owned low-density residential, two and a half acres per unit, also with the DS and RAZ overlays. A little background, the school was founded in Pacific Grove in 1961 as a preschool through eighth-grade facility. They operated for three years in Carmel out of temporary facilities, and they opened their current location in 1965 pursuant to US permit as approved by the Planning Commission. At that time, the student maximum was placed at 300, and the current enrollment is about 265. So this 300-student maximum enrollment is still in place. Below is a file photo I found that I thought was slightly interesting. It shows Reverend Peter Farmer and David Hill on site. I think this may be from the groundbreaking at the current site. And Reverend Farmer actually served as the first headmaster, a position he held at least through the late 1970s. In 2022, a combined development permit, PLN 210068, was approved for the renovation and expansion of the school's outdoor facilities. This included an artificial turf, athletic field, an all-weather track, tennis courts, grass practice fields, an open-air pavilion, and circulation improvements, pickup and drop-off area in particular. In 2023, there was a first amendment to this combined development permit, and this was to allow the installation of shade structures and an outdoor seating area. Now before you today is a second amendment to this combined development permit, and this would be for a 4,745-square-foot fieldhouse with two locker rooms, three classroom/ multipurpose rooms, storage closets, and a kitchenette. For a little spatial context, the star would be the location of this structure. It's about 300 feet from the closest point at Carmel Valley Road. And if you can follow the cursor, you can see from the previous combined development permit, the athletic fields that were constructed. At the bottom here is the pavilion, and this First Amendment constructed these shade structures by the Riparian Forest. These are the structure elevations. It's something of a barn design. It would be 22 and a half feet height at the roof ridge line. Floor plan showing the structure, which would be approximately 110 feet by 42 feet. These are included as Exhibit A of the staff report. The colors and materials would be off-white paint siding, cedar-stained trim, and zinc-gray roofing. And in keeping with the Carmel Valley Master Plan Policy 1.20, the design motifs are generally what you would call rural and rustic, rustic, rather. This includes wood trim and barn-style doors and windows. And they would match the colors of the existing school buildings. This is staff's photo from February 10 of the flagging and staking, taken from the closest public viewing area on Carmel Valley Road. You can see at Photographs Center, the flagging and staking is well below the ridge line behind it and about flush with the tree line, as it exists. This is a visual simulation provided by the applicant, showing the finished structure. And this project was referred to the Carmel Valley LUAC on January 21, and they recommended approval by a 6-0 vote with two members absent. Two items to clean up on the staff report, rather, one addition, would be a seventh condition of approval, and that's the standard indemnification agreement. Accordingly, condition number two would have to be amended to reflect seven conditions of approval instead of six. Also to be cleaned up on the page two of the resolution, finding one evidence would be changed to evidence, of course, and under finding two, evidence A should refer to finding number two, evidence J, and not finding number one, evidence J. Staff's recommendation with these aforementioned changes would be to find the project categorically exempt per Section 15314 of SEQA, which pertains to minor additions to existing schools, and approve the Second Amendment to the previously approved combined development permit, PLN 21006A, to allow construction of the 4,745-square-foot fieldhouse. With that, staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you. With that, we bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Mr. Mason, I don't want to make any remarks on the merits of the project at this point. We'll hear from everyone. But the 2022 permit and the subsequent amendment, none of these included building structures with walls. And so we now have an application which calls for 4,745 feet of structure, which in many situations would be considered a big deal. Now, since 2022, it was 2022, it's not 2025, this begins to feel like a very gradual approach, often referred to as piecemealing. So I want to know how we consider such, to my mind, a change of pace, because we are building a structure instead of improving the athletic fields, improving the lighting, shade structures don't have walls. And now we're moving into actually building things under the note that that's a minor change. It's not a change of pace. So I'd just like your comments on that and why, I would have thought this would have all been in the original discussion in terms of planning ahead so that we could consider it as a piece in this case, as we would in most cases.
Through the chair, if I may answer on behalf of Steve. The original 2022 combined development permit plans did consider, or at least illustrate on the plan, set a future potential fieldhouse. However, at that time, the combined development permit did not include the necessary entitlements to consider such a structure. In 2022, or 2023, these shade structures were constructed throughout the property to facilitate outdoor learning experiences. And then as, once the athletic fields and other site improvements were constructed, All Saints Day School contacted the county and looked for opportunities for where and how they could permit the fieldhouse. And through the development of the site, it was better determined that the current proposed location is best suited for outdoor or for classroom facilities, as well as proximity to the athletic fields. So it, it was contemplated in 2022, but not necessarily permitted at the time. And All Saints Day School is coming forward at this time with a proposal. And part of the reason why it's been referred to the Planning Commission today is not only the visibility, but also the original permits did not consider structures, per se, but more site improvements.
Through the chair. Thank you. That's very helpful. Are there any additional considerations where we had a philosophical consideration of potential improvements that were not at that point given entitlements in this particular plan? I'm sorry, I don't remember. It's only 2022, and I still don't remember.
For this specific property, I'm not aware of any other foreseeable or future developments that were considered or contemplated in 2022 that have not come forward today.
Thank you. That's extremely helpful.
Any other Commissioners? Okay, with that, seeing no other Commissioners with their hands up, we're going to go ahead and ask, open the public hearing and ask the agent or property owner to make a presentation. And if you can state your name for the record.
Chair Gonzalez, Members of the Commission, my name is Joel Panzer with Maureen Rock, Planning Consultants, representing the applicant, All Saints Day School. We've worked previously with Ms. Jensen on the first two components of the project, and then I haven't seen Steve Mason in eight years, so it's a pleasure to see him come back and help out with the workload. Terrific staff report. I'd like to compliment Mr. Mason on the presentation and finding the historic photograph. I think most of the items are, have been presented fairly well in the staff report. I think there's one, in response to Commissioner Deal's question, we did show the fieldhouse, but as you can imagine, with a nonprofit school, it's all about engagement and fundraising. So at that point in time, they, they knew that they wanted to have a fieldhouse, but they didn't know that if they would have the financial resources. And with me today to maybe talk a little bit about that is Scott Fujita, who was the headmaster at the time, who is now the President of the Board of Directors. And if there's questions on the architecture, we do have Matt Leitner, the project architect with HGHB, in the audience today. But, but the thought was for the fields, the athletic fields, to improve the quality, the educational experience there, the companion building would be helpful because without it, for students to go use a restroom, you know, there's got to be adult oversight of the students as they move around the campus. So this will resolve that with the athletic fields. So, you know, the kids can use the locker room, and there's restrooms for the girls and the boys very close by. It also then provides some additional classroom space. So whether it's for classroom or like a parent-teacher night or a parent-teacher night, or it just kind of increases the ability of the school to use that campus for a variety of uses. As noted in the staff report, the LUAC did recommend approval, six zero. There are a couple minor edits I would like to ask for, to be included in the resolution. Finding four, health and safety, evidence B. The property currently, there was a home that was demolished on the property, so there's an onsite water credit for the fixtures that were in that structure. There was a little bit of Al Paso water left over from a prior improvement at the school. And the last sentence in evidence B reads, "An existing well is used for landscape irrigation." That is correct, but there'll probably be the need to convert a small amount of that well water, as far as Water Management District is concerned, to meet the water needs of the building. So it's kind of water math, but the water is there. We've provided evidence to Mr. Mason to confirm water availability. Finding four, evidence C, it indicates that All Saints Day School is currently utilizing an existing onsite wastewater treatment system. I'd like to note that we do have a permit, and then that system was demolished. All Saints is one of the first properties to connect to the new COD or Carmel Area Wastewater District sewer line. So this building, in addition to everything else on the campus served by that, this building would connect to the sewer system. And we are aware of the added condition with the indemnification agreement, so we're okay with that. That concludes my comments, and I hope the commission can present. I'd like to ask Mr. Fujita come up to address the Planning Commission at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. Good morning, everyone. Commission, thanks for having us this morning. My name is Scott Fujita. I am the chair of the Board of Trustees at All Saints Day School. I've been connected to the school community now, I think, since two thousand eleven as a parent, joined the Board of Trustees back in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, was athletic director two thousand seventeen, eighteen, stepped into the head of school position in two thousand nineteen, and this past summer transitioned into the chair role. So seen the school change in a lot of ways, and it's been so nice to be a part of it. So appreciate you hearing us out this morning. As Mr. Panzer said, we embarked on a master planning process for the school back in two thousand nineteen, twenty, when I came into the head position. It was part of our strategic plan. So it was about making campus improvements to improve and augment the student experience. And within that, there were obviously the field improvements, like we talked about, outdoor learning spaces, take advantage of the unique climate we have in Carmel Valley to get the kids outdoors, hands-on learning as much as possible. And to Commissioner Deal's point, we did include just the idea and notion of the field house building in the initial permit application. However, to Mr. Panzer's point, the funding just wasn't there. So we had to make sure that we had the funding in place to move forward, which is why we are where we are today. So it's been an exciting time, and also to your point, there are no new structures being considered beyond this. This essentially completes the master plan program that we embarked on back in two thousand nineteen, twenty. So excited for next steps. We appreciate Ms. Jensen, her work on this. Steve, your work as well. We've read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and we're in agreement, and just appreciate your consideration. I'm available for any questions. Ms. Brown, Sarah Brown, our new head of school, she's on campus this week for every five years accreditation process, so she sends her regrets that she couldn't be here, but I'm here to speak on her and the school's behalf. So thanks again for your consideration, and I'm available to answer any questions if there are any.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I have a question, actually, for Mr. Panzer. Listening to his, thank you for your comment.
Sure, thank you.
I don't mean to dismiss them impolitely. Do appreciate them. Mr. Panzer, you talked about finding four evidence B and made a distinction about the writing. Was there, what do you think should be done about it? I mean, obviously, we want to correctly reflect what you've said.
So I would maybe amplify. I just didn't want the permit to suggest that the existing well, as it is associated with this permit, would be for landscape irrigation only. And maybe the solution is an existing well will be used to supplement the water needed for the building and is used for landscape irrigation purposes, something to that effect.
And that would be under the jurisdiction of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District?
Correct.
Maybe that would...
Oh, yeah, yeah, if you wanted to do it that way. But it's just to say that the well is not solely for landscape irrigation as it relates to this permit.
Thank you. I just wanted to understand what you're suggesting. Much appreciated. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Artson?
Thank you. One of the letters that we received refers to batting cages and golf bays. I'm just wondering if there's any of those contemplated in this project now or in the future.
Commissioner, no, it is not. I would also point out, and I forgot to mention, there was another letter in the agenda packet that talked about lighting and loud speakers and noise. And I would point out that the athletic field, that's an appropriate comment, this is, you know, building a confined building space, so that letter's really not quite on point. But batting cages and so forth, no. I think if you've been out to Carmel Valley or have driven by, the athletic experience is pretty much fully built out at this point, based on the master plan Mr. Fujita had mentioned.
Thanks.
Any other commissioners? With that, if anybody in the chambers would like to address the commission regarding this item, this would be the time to do it. Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails related to this particular item?
There are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you. With that, we'll, I guess, bring it back to staff if there's any additions or clarifications that staff would want to make.
Not at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Well, then, we bring it back to the commission for questions, clarifications, motions. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I'm just going to ask the staff if they have suggestions about whether or not and if whether, how to amend finding four evidence B, given the testimony here today.
Through the chair, we would amend the final line of finding four evidence B to read, "An existing well is used for landscape irrigation purposes, some water to be diverted for other uses under MPWMD jurisdiction."
Put the word "may" in there, just for me? Maybe? Would that be acceptable?
Certainly.
All right. If there's nobody else anxious to speak, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this application as amended here in this meeting.
Okay, Commissioner Deal has made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it, but I had one, I thought, he asked for one other clarification. Is that, I thought he asked for two. What was the second one again? I always want to make sure we get it right, right?
Finding four, evidence C indicates or suggests that the property is served by an onsite septic system. The clarification is to indicate that the property is fully served by the Carmel Area Wastewater District sewer system, just to clarify that, so that this would not further increase septic capacity.
Could that be done as part of this motion? I would add that change to this motion, if the maker of the motion is okay to it.
I'm okay with it. Is staff's okay with it?
Most definitely. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Roberts?
In an effort to address Commissioner Deal's original comment, I was looking through the findings and evidence to see if we referenced the, essentially, the minor amendment and why we are making it and that it was previously proposed and the, or previously suggested or whatever the wording is. Is that something that, I guess, maybe even to county council, is that something we should clarify in findings and evidence? Or is it not relevant?
Sorry, could you repeat the language? I just want to make sure I got it.
I just was curious to know if, since we're being asked to accept a minor amendment, a minor addition to this permit, if what we were told by staff about why we are accepting the minor amendment should be added to the findings and evidence?
I don't think it's required, but it wouldn't hurt to complete the record.
I guess that would be my request, then, to have a narrative explaining how we got here.
Would we be able to do it on the spot, or do we?
Through the chair, yes. Staff can add some language to either finding one or finding two, addressing that this was a previously contemplated use but had not been permitted at this time.
Any other questions from the commission?
Just wanted to say we're okay with those amendments for the record.
So all those in favor of the motion with recommended amendments, so indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention motion carries. With that, we're going to go ahead and move to item number three, as based on the scheduled matters, and that's PLN two four zero two three four Donovan, Paul Martin, and Elisa M E T R S. And so with that, if the staff is ready, we will go ahead and they'll make the presentation on item number three. Thank you.
My name is McKenna Bowling, and today I will be presenting project file PLN two four O two three four Donovan. The subject parcel is located at two eight one nine Congress Road in Pebble Beach, within the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan. The property is owned medium-density residential with building site six, design control, and recreational equipment storage overlays in the inland area. The proposed project is a combined development permit consisting of a use permit to allow removal of thirty-three protected trees, four dead or hazardous trees, and a design approval to allow construction of a three thousand one hundred and eleven-square-foot single-family dwelling with an attached six hundred forty-nine-square-foot garage, second-story five hundred-square-foot junior accessory dwelling unit, four hundred seventy-seven square feet of covered porches and patios and associated site improvements. The project meets all site development standards based on the applicable zoning by maintaining the following setbacks and being under the maximum allowed building site coverage and floor area ratio percentages. The attached photos are from staff's site visit conducted on January third, two thousand twenty-five, with photos being taken from Congress Road and from the entry point of the driveway. The subject parcel is heavily forested with a mix of coast live oaks, Monterey pines, and other mature vegetation, as shown on the screen. The project includes a use permit to allow removal of thirty-six protected trees, three of which are hazardous and are indicated by the green stars on the site plan. One additional Monterey pine towards the rear back patio, also indicated by a green star, is identified as being dead and proposed for removal. As delineated on the plans, thirty-three of the thirty-seven trees are within the building footprint or in the immediate grading limits and are indicated by the red stars. No trees are proposed for removal to allow construction of ancillary site improvements such as decks and patios. The Arbors recommended pruning twenty trees on the site to avoid further tree removal. Avoidance isn't possible in its current shape or configuration. If the project were to be relocated, it would result in equal or greater impacts on forest resources. Additionally, the proposed residence is seven percent smaller than the maximum allowed development. Maximizing floor area ratio and/or site coverage would result in the removal of additional protected oaks and Monterey pines. Therefore, as designed and cited, the proposed residence helps to minimize impacts to forest The proposed colors and materials consist of light beige stucco, stone cladding, brown concrete roofing tile, black metal-framed windows, and wooden-framed entry doors and garage doors. These colors and materials are consistent with the neighborhood character and assure protection of the public view shed. The property is surrounded by mature coast live oaks and other mature vegetation, helping assure that the proposed project will not create any adverse visual impacts. This project went before the Del Monte Forest Land Use Advisory Committee on January sixteenth of two thousand twenty-five and received a vote of six to zero in support of the project as proposed. Staff received a public comment letter on March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, stating concerns regarding tree removal and potential impacts to protected plant and animal species. As stated in the biological report, the proposed development of the single-family dwelling will not have impacts to any protected plant or animal species, and a use permit has been applied to this project to allow tree removal that meets the minimum necessary for construction of the first single-family dwelling. Finally, the proposed tree removal in this case is not a unique circumstance that wouldn't allow the proposed residence from being considered under a Class III categorical exemption. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project categorically exempt pursuant to Section fifteen three oh three of the SEQA guidelines, and approve a combined development permit consisting of a use permit to allow removal of thirty-three protected trees, four dead or hazardous trees, and a design approval to allow construction of a three thousand one hundred and eleven-square-foot single-family dwelling with an attached six hundred forty-nine-square-foot garage, second-story five hundred-square-foot junior accessory dwelling unit, four hundred seventy-seven square feet of porches and patios and associated site improvements. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available for questions.
With that, Annie, bring it back to the commission for any questions. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a really quick note that on page five, we referenced the wrong LUAC in the staff summary. I don't think it's a big deal, but just want to make that note. And then to ask staff to confirm that the only reason that this proposal is before us at this time has to do with tree removal and the design review. Is that correct? No other variances, no other special circumstances? That's it, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes. On the tree removal, so we have a total of thirty-three trees being removed plus four dead trees. So is that for a total of thirty-seven trees?
Yes, that is correct.
And the replacement of those trees is just the twelve, fifteen-gallon trees? Is that what being proposed?
Yes, that was a recommendation from the Arbors due to spacing and with the lot being currently heavily forested.
Right, thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Roberts?
Just as a follow-up on that question, I feel like in previous projects similar to this, we've required off-site plantings when there haven't been enough space on-site. Was that considered?
That was not considered at this time. We felt that with the removal and the replacement ratio and the Arbors recommendations, the twelve, fifteen-gallon coast live oaks to be replanted was sufficient as a requirement.
Any other commissioners? With that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and so is the agent or the property owner ready for a presentation? Please state your name for the record.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bradley Green. I am with Hastings Construction, and I'm here to represent Paul and Elisa Donovan, the owners of this property. Thank you, McKenna, for your presentation and your help through this process. We are applying for planning permit to construct the three- We are applying for planning permit to construct the 3,111-square-foot single-family dwelling with the other portions mentioned previously by our planner, McKenna. We've placed it onsite to minimize the amount of trees being removed and didn't... We tried to keep everything centrally located so that we weren't removing excess trees. We're only asking to remove trees that are within the proposed building footprint, aside from the four that are hazardous. We provided an additional Arbors report for those. Let's see. I think staff did a great job of doing a presentation, so aside from that, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys have.
Annie, commissioner, have any questions? Commissioner Hartzell?
I'm actually not sure who to direct this one to. I'm sorry. I heard 15-gallon oaks. Was it just oaks that are contemplated for the replantings?
The Arbors recommended at least 10 of the 12 to be coastlive oaks.
And did anybody contemplate larger trees since we're replacing some landmark trees for replanting?
The 15-gallon was a recommendation from the Arbors based on survival rate. Because of the spacing, they have to be spaced at least eight feet apart, and so we were just going with what the Arbors recommended.
Commissioner Roberts mentioned off-site plantings. I'm also interested in off-site plantings or just some other way to address the ecosystem services that we're losing with these trees. Is there any way to talk about that or tell me more about it?
Can I also just add, we aren't removing any landmark coastal live oak trees that have a diameter of more than 24 inches.
Just pines.
Just pines, yeah. The coastal live oaks that are being removed are smaller in size, so they wouldn't classify for landmark status.
And if I may add to that, Monterey pines that are greater than 24 inches aren't protected in the same manner that coastal oaks may be if they were to be over 24 inches. However, to your question regarding off-site replanting, that is generally a requirement that's established through the Del Monte Forest Land Use Plan within the coastal areas of the Pebble Beach community, within the Greater Monterey Peninsula Area Plan, and then, which is also served by Title 21. There isn't clear requirements for off-site mitigation if onsite replanting can't be fully satisfied. There is, however, a requirement for oak woodland habitat to be restored at a full one-to-one, whether that's onsite or off-site, and to my knowledge, this property doesn't classify as oak woodland habitat. That doesn't mean there isn't the opportunity for the applicant to seek more voluntary, or as the commission may desire, off-site mitigation with any local agency or the Pebble Beach Company.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions from the commission? Seeing none, thank you. And if there's anybody here in the chambers that would like to address the commission on this particular project, this would be the time to do it. Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom or any emails? Anybody on Zoom that would like to address the commission on this particular item?
There are no hands up on Zoom and no additional emails.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to staff to see if there are any other clarifications, recommendations, et cetera.
Not at this time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Bring it back to the commission for any other questions, comments, clarifications, motions. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I just want to recognize the unique nature of the Del Monte Forest in that the Land Use Advisory Committee does cover inland and coastal areas. That's something most of the other land use advisory committees don't do, so it is understandably confusing. I'm going to go ahead and move staff's recommendation in this matter.
Commissioner Deal has made a motion to move forward with staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Work has seconded the motion. Any other questions or clarifications in discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion so indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that's Agenda Item Number Four. That's PLN 240149-Rizdel Inc. and Quail Meadows Homeowners Association. And this is the next item on the agenda, and staff will go ahead and make a presentation.
Yes, thank you again, Commissioners Steve Mason and Fiona Jensen to present PLN 240149-Rizdel Incorporated and Quail Meadows Homeowners Association. The project site is within the Quail Meadows subdivision, the Carmel Valley Master Plan area. The three parcels involved, as illustrated here, would be parcels number one and two at 10 and 2 and 1/2 acres respectively. Excuse me. These are owned by Rizdel Incorporated, and these are residentially developed parcels. Parcel Three at 181 acres is owned by the Quail Meadows HOA, and this is one of their designated open space parcels. The overall entitlement is a combined development permit to include a general plan amendment to redesignate and rezone portions of Parcels One, Two, and Three, which is what we're here to review today. It will also include an administrative permit and design approval for the construction of a 2,929-square-foot second garage, a use permit to allow development on slopes in excess of 25%, and a use permit to allow the removal of five protected trees, including four oaks of 33, 18, 18, and 6 inches diameter, and one Monterey pine of 48 inches in diameter. Now, as mentioned before us today is the General Plan Amendment Early Assessment by the Planning Commission. I'll read this verbatim from Section 2191030 of County Code, stating that "The Planning Commission shall provide an early assessment of each application for a general plan amendment to determine the suitability of the request. The Planning Commission shall provide by a majority vote its early assessment as to whether the proposed project has the potential to meet the evaluation criteria set forth in Section 2191050 of this chapter." And I'll touch on that section momentarily. Now, this is going to get slightly confusing, so of course, we can refer back to these slides also. I brought a full-size plan set I can pass up to any of the commissioners if they'd like to review it. So Parcel One and Parcel Two are both currently under a land use designation of residential low density. Those are the Rizdel parcels. Parcel Three, owned by Quail Meadows HOA, is resource conservation. The current zonings of Parcel One and Two, Rizdel, are low-density residential, and Parcel Three, the HOA parcel, is open space zoning. Now, most of the activity is going to center around 2 and 1/2-acre Parcel Two, which is outlined here on the red. The boxed area to the left would be... Well, currently, it's occupied partly by a private driveway and utility easement off of the court. This is on open space Parcel Three, which is owned by the HOA, and this would be the site of the proposed garage that would be merged and rezoned as part of Parcel Two. On the right side of Parcel Two, you notice the checked yellow line, and this is a private HOA-owned pedestrian and equestrian trail easement over the Rizdel parcel. Existing zoning on the left and proposed zoning on the right. As you can see, the private driveway easement area would be merged into Parcel Two, and the area overlying the trail easement would be merged into the HOA's Parcel Three, the open space parcel. This is a wider angle view. There would actually also have to be, if you can follow the cursor here, this is a 30-by-1,000-foot-long stretch to connect Parcel Three to keep the open space parcel contiguous, so it would not be an illegal subdivision by creating an extra parcel. And the underlying existing land use as proposed and existing, you can see on the right, it would result in contiguous residential low-density land use. Now, we did a little background research to find out how and why the open space parcels were implemented with the subdivision to do this. We referenced the 1988 Quail Meadows final subsequent EIR, and it describes these open space areas, which are six parcels in total, as being intended to ensure compliance with policies relating to protection of ridge lines, and the EIR calls out these areas as having the greatest value for wildlife migration and for their native oak woodland habitat, and as being areas with inherent risk of soil creep. And this EIR also points out Parcel F, which is part of this project, is having high erodability. This is a site photo of the driveway and utility easement area of Parcel Three, proposed to be added to Parcel Two. Now, the applicant's interest in the project, as mentioned, Rizdel needs additional space to construct their second garage. The Quail Meadows HOA has a few points. They would prefer to own the land beneath their trail easement so they could make improvements to the trail in the future. They may extend it and possibly allow dual use as fire access. They also may dedicate a storm drain facility easement, and they would prefer to have their open space unencumbered from the private driveway access, which currently exists off of Covey Court. Now, Section 2191050, as referenced earlier, basically states that "Overall, general plan amendments should be in accordance with state law and not in conflict with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan." There are a few general plan policies, and this is not pertaining to this project in particular, but this is pertaining to any time a forested hillside in open space is converted to residential zoning. And I think these three primary policies the Planning Commission is well familiar with, and those are the three policies: discourage development on slopes in excess of 25%, alterations to hillsides, or removal of healthy native oak trees. The state law that's referenced would be California Government Code, Section 65358, which states that "If it deems it to be in the public interest, the legislative body may amend all or part of an adopted general plan." Staff does have at minimum some questions about whether this project is in public interest, largely centered on the fact that this is a private property. It's a 56-unit subdivision where access is restricted to residents and their invited guests only. This is reinforced in the trail easement owned by the homeowners association. It's described in the establishing document as being for the benefit of and used by the Quail Meadows Homeowners Association, their members, and their guests. This project was referred to the Carmel Valley LUAC at their December 2 meeting, at which point the LUAC recommended approval of the project, 5-0 with two members absent. This concludes staff's presentation. We're available to answer any questions.
Thank you. With that, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Appreciate that presentation. I think it was quite clear. Start out by just really making sure I understand what is before us today. Mr. Mason, you described a combined development permit, and I thought I heard you say that subsequent to the consideration of the general plan amendment, which is, the formal consideration is not today, that would be an administrative permit? Did I hear that correctly? Because of giving trees and slopes?
Through the chair, yes. Today's... The request before the Planning Commission today is only consideration and determination of whether or not the proposed general plan amendment, which is limited to rezoning and redesignated portions of three parcels, has the potential to meet the criteria listed in the presentation today. There is a larger project that is being processed by the county that is a combined development permit inclusive of the general plan amendment, an administrative permit, and design approval to allow construction of the proposed garage, a use permit to allow development on slopes in excess of 25%, and a use permit to allow the removal of five trees. So that is a larger project that will come back before the Planning Commission for recommendation at a later time. Today's request is only whether or not the general plan amendment has the potential to meet the criteria to support such amendment.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So this is a preliminary assessment, and that is all that it is. It's not committing us to any course of action in the future when the larger permit comes before us.
That is correct.
Great. I'd just like to compare the slopes and trees on the existing area, which is currently low-density residential, and on the area we propose to add to low-density residential.
If I understood the question, Parcel Two, which is currently developed with a approximately 20,000-square-foot single-family dwelling and associated site improvements, is almost entirely encumbered by slopes in excess of 25%, as well as mature and immature oaks and other protected trees. There is a portion of the slope that is less than 25%, but...
Can we put up some drawings so that I could have a visual? I get confused. Sorry.
So this is Parcel Two of question. The recently constructed single-family dwelling is shown here. Just north of that residence, there is a vacant area that is... Has been currently replanted with approximately 25-gallon oak trees that were required as mitigation for construction of the residence, which removed a handful of trees. However, there is a portion of that area that is less than 25% slopes. However, it's not enough area that would allow the proposed garage to not develop on any steeper slopes. But in general, the Parcel Two is predominantly on slopes in excess of 25% and encumbered by coastal live oak trees.
Through the chair, and then the proposed addition to Parcel Two for want of a better word to describe it?
Sure. That area is also almost entirely on slopes in excess of 25%. As you get closer to Covey Court, it does level out. And then there is a handful of coastal live oak trees and Monterey pines that are in the area as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roberts?
So I guess my question is, there's not currently any development on the proposed site that we're considering for a general plan amendment?
All three parcels are developed in some way or another. Parcel One...
I wrote down Parcel Three. I think that's what we're considering moving on to.
Sorry, give us one second to pull up some images. IT, if you could share staff, right, please? Thank you. So Parcel One, shown here in blue, it is developed also with approximately 20,000-square-foot house and another detached, I believe, approximately 20,000-square-foot garage. Parcel Three, shown in purple, is minimally developed. There is a private road that serves Parcsals One and Parcsals Two. There is also a water tank shown roughly here. That's a private easement that would allow that water tank. And then Parcel Two is currently developed with a residence that the Planning Commission considered a few years ago. And this area boxed in black does have a private driveway leading to the subject property and a retaining wall, but other than that is unencumbered by development.
Thank you. And to follow up, in looking at these pictures, it was mentioned that the wildlife corridor was considered and why some of this was left open space. And so tell me, was, is that sliver along parcel, the proposed parcel three, in effort to maintain that? What, I can't remember what that was for.
By merging the private driveway and utility easement into parcel two, that would effectively subdivide the northern portion of parcel three from the southern portion of parcel three. And so to not subdivide the property, the applicant is proposing to connect the northern part to the southern part by this 30-foot-wide by 1,000-foot-long strip of land. I will note that 20 feet of that 30-feet strip of land is already the setback for that subject property and couldn't be developed already. It is entirely on slopes in excess of 25% and really drops off onto the lower property to the left. But that is really to serve as a connector. There's been no evidence that indicates that this would serve as better wildlife corridor than the existing, although it is recognized that there is a road going through that utility easement here.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Gomez?
The change really, do you believe this change, I guess, is more of a, does that enhance the protection of the environment there, the open space area? I'm just, do you believe that, I guess, says the recommendations coming from staff, right?
IT, if you wouldn't mind sharing staff, right, again? There are three general criteria outside of whether or not the general plan amendment complies with local zoning and policies. There's three criteria that should be considered whether or not the general plan amendment is appropriate. So shown on the right image, on the far right, this area, or if we go to the current conditions, right, there, this yellow line represents a trail easement that is currently held by the HOA. It is used by members of the subject subdivision. And placing that into open space may be a more compatible use if it's already dedicated for recreational and open space use. However, that doesn't mean that the current trail easement is in conflict with underlying zoning, and it could be achieved in another manner if they would like to grant that to the HOA separately. The area here that is developed with a autocourt and a private driveway, that is necessary for parcel two to access, the private driveway that it is serving, the private road that it is serving. Development of this area does not better protect, or encouraging development in this area by rezoning it to low-density residential, in staff's opinion, does not better serve the resource protection policies of the 2010 general plan. And finally, the 30-foot-wide strip of land on parcel one that would become part of parcel three. It isn't clear whether or not there is a greater benefit than it already serves as a setback that could not be developed and may or may not already be used by wildlife.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Would you just run through the findings that would be necessary to make to amend the general plan? What are the opportunities there to do that, to make an amendment?
The findings required, which would be subject to the Board of Supervisors' final decision, would be that the general plan amendment is in accordance with state law. So that was the previously referenced state law section that requires that if it's deemed to be in public interest, a local body may amend a general plan. Additionally, the amendment would have to not be in conflict with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan that are not proposed for amendment. So in this case, all that is being proposed is a change in, simply colors on a map, the land use designations in the zoning districts, which do allow different uses and protection of resources. And then finally, they would have to demonstrate that there is one or more of the following situations. There is an oversight or an error in the adopted general plan. There's a clear change in circumstances or facts, or that the amendment better carries out the overall goals and policies of the general plan. I've briefly spoken on potential change in circumstances, being that there is a private utility and driveway easement that is currently developed with necessary improvements to access a residential property. There is also a trail easement that has been separately conveyed that allows for open-space recreational uses. But overall, staff is, at this time, without additional evidence, in question of whether or not these findings can be made, but that is why staff is here before you today, seeking direction in whether or not the Planning Commission thinks there is the potential for the project to satisfy these requirements.
Thank you. Can we go back to the drawing? I'm gonna go look at the 30-foot strip again. So in the larger context of the zoning surrounding it and the area surrounding it. Okay. So when we look at the 30-foot strip, the area on the adjacent parcel is zoned resource conservation as well, or there, it is, in my memory, extremely steep there, but is that correct? So it's, I guess I'm getting at it. It would be unlikely for a development to occur in that location on the parcel next door. Just guessing.
That is correct. That is entirely in slopes in excess of 30%, probably closer to 50%, 60% slopes. And I believe there was a subdivision that was approved on the three properties to the left, and that entire space shown in green was required to be placed in a conservation and scenic easement. Whether or not that's been conveyed at this time, I'm not sure.
Okay. So looking at this, this 30-foot strip, which on the map looks crazy, frankly, I mean, why would you do that except to, like, you know, elect a different member of Congress, I suppose? But in actual, real-world terms, would extend that open-space area that we're looking at on the adjacent parcel by 30 feet or whatever? Is that a fair characterization?
Yes. The, I would like to say that resource conservation can be developed with single-family dwelling development. Yes, that area shown in green is very constrained by slopes and trees and potentially conservation and scenic easement. And the open-space zoning district prohibits any residential development. But in general, the land use designation, if we go to the next slide, would show that there would be a 30-foot increase, I guess, to the resource conservation land use designation and provide for more contiguous areas, and you're not isolating a residential property.
Thank you. I guess I'm just thinking of the area itself physically. I don't know how many people are familiar with it, but that's a cliff that goes, drops off to the other adjacent parcel. I'm just thinking of this as kind of, it appears on the map, and I'm not exactly sure where it is on the ground, but it appears like a setback from that cliff. Is that reasonable? I mean, am I thinking of it correctly?
That area, that 30-foot strip, is essentially the setback for that property already, so it couldn't be developed further. By merging the, or reducing that property boundary by 30 feet, there would be another 30 or 20-foot setback on that side, subject to the, for the residence. So currently, that 20-foot area could not currently be developed, and placing it into a conservation or into an open-space easement would further prohibit any development in that area and better protect any natural resources there are.
So, but you get another 20-foot setback from the property line when you put the 30 feet in, right? So we're actually making it impossible to get any closer to the edge of that cliff, for want of a less professional term?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hartzell?
I'm hoping for some clarity on the standards that we're putting in place, or making findings under here. So there's the state law that deems it to be in the public interest for the legislative body to amend an adopted general plan. And then there's the county criteria on making general plan amendments. So my first question is, if we find a project has met the evaluation criteria, does that imply that we have also found that it's in the public interest under state law? Maybe that's for council. Or do we have to, the other side of the coin on this question is, do we have to find both? Do we have to find that it's in public interest and it meets the criteria? Or if we find it meets the criteria, does that mean it meets state law too?
So the findings are related to Monterey County Code section. You have to make those specific findings. The action itself needs to be consistent with state law, which therefore would be prompting that it is deemed to be in the public interest to make it consistent with state law. So nuanced, but the two need to be a part of the decision.
They need to be found separately. It's not that if we find it compliant with Monterey County Code section that it's automatically... Yes, you need to find both.
That is my understanding, yes, and perhaps county council, there's a more nuanced legal approach, but yes, the public interest component of state law for general plan amendments is separate from the local findings necessary for...
Yes, through the chair, those would be separate findings. One would satisfy state law, and they would not necessarily be connected, though they may be related.
Thanks. That clears something up for me. I think that's it for now.
Any other questions from Commissioner Mendoza?
Yes. Going back to the existing and proposed images that we had on the screen here earlier, we had a trail easement on parcel number two. Now, what happened to that easement? Did we, did it end up in a different location, or what are we doing?
The easement would be part of parcel three at the result, or implementation of the general plan amendment and overall project. So that yellow line would be part of the open-space parcel.
So it's the same, well, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
So to be clear, there's the same amount of open space under each configuration, it's just in a different place? We don't have any area change in the amount of space? It's just a different location?
Through the chair, that's correct. It's almost equal exchange. Actually, there'd be slightly more open space as an end result.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Hartzell?
This is sort of a new kid question, but, Mr. Mason, you referred to soil creep and erodibility in your presentation, and I'm just wondering if you could define those for me and explain, sort of in context?
Through the chair, I believe that just means this is steep and soil that's potentially subject to liquefaction or landslide or something to that effect.
Did that answer your question? Or is any other questions from the commission? Okay, with that, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, and at this point, it would be the time for the agent or property owner to go ahead and make a presentation, and please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good morning. Anthony Lombardo, on behalf of the applicants. I apologize, I'm relatively last-minute into this one, and so I forwarded a PowerPoint presentation this morning, and I don't know if it made it through the county process. I do have hard copies, that if we can go old-school if it didn't, if it didn't make Once again, I have the feeling of Methuselah. I did Quail Meadows with Ed Haber in 1988, so I can shed some light on what was meant for parcel F. Parcel F, as you saw in the illustration, goes around the entire top rim of the Quail Meadows bowl and onto some very steep vertical slopes that are highly erosive and subject to liquefaction, which was the, revealed in the EIR's analysis. So that, that is not this part of parcel F. Parcel F by Neil Engineers was a civil engineer on the property, and they connected the homeowners' association common area into more or less a single parcel F, which incorporated the property that was very steep and large contiguous acreages, staff has described, with the other open-space parcels that Commissioner Deal mentioned on the, on the other side, backside of the Quail Meadows property. And in order to do that, as a single parcel, it created this little corridor between lots 32 and 33. So, oh, thank you. So it's, it's hard to understand, other than for ease of engineers' description, why this was part of the common area open space of parcel F, which I'll show you later, is on either side of it. But the homeowner's parcel, or parcel F, actually goes from the front of those pickup trucks in the middle of the driveway, and you go, you see as you go up the hill, which of course was cut, was a cut, it wasn't naturally that steep, it was cut to create the building pad for the house that's on lot 33. But you see in the background ornamental landscaping, that's the property line of lot 32, or that's on lot 32. So parcel F exists, this portion of parcel F is this thin corridor, which consists of a driveway, a retaining wall, a cut slope, and then a small, flat area and the landscaping of the adjacent parcel. So the project, as you will see in the future presumably, is to add some subterranean garages. This is an artist rendering, obviously, of what it would look like, but where those, where that wall is now, there will be openings cut into it and a garage, and garage doors that will be subterranean. The top of the garage structure will be re-landscaped with plant, native plant materials, so it will appear to anyone, well, no one can see it from anywhere, I guess, other than flying over it. It will appear as a natural landscape. Next slide, please. The problem is that I believe the staff has provided the incorrect advice to the applicant about what's needed for this application, because we really don't need, well, not we really don't need, we don't need a general plan amendment or rezoning to do this project. You can see on this exhibit, the purple area is parcel F. That's my F, not the county's F, on, above and below lot 32 and lot 33, and then you see the narrow neck between the two, which is encumbered by that driveway and parking and utility easement that actually results in parcel F having really no, no undisturbed area or relatively little undisturbed area. And certainly, I wouldn't call it a migration corridor between the parking lot of lot 33 and the landscaping of lot 32. In fact, both 32 and 33 are completely fenced in, so there, there isn't any migration. And of course, in 1988, we weren't quite as enlightened as to the importance of wildlife migration, so that, that wasn't even a consideration back then. The error, and the reason why we don't need a general plan amendment, is that, as you can see in the upper right, the little explanation of the zoning shows that it's, the zoning on parcel F is ODSRAZ, which is not resource conservation, it is an open-space district zoning. This property is not zoned open space. It is zoned resource conservation. If we go to the next slide. So here's a figure from the Carmel Valley Master Plan. As you can see, both the parcel to the west that you talked about earlier and parcel F, our zoned resource conservation, that funny green or bright green color, which more or less is all of the common area owned by the homeowners' association in Quail Meadows. It is not zoned open space, or sorry, it is not designated in the general plan as open space. You can see the open space is a completely different color and is not designated for parcel F. and is not designated for parcel, is not a designation on parcel F. Next slide, please. Here's the problem, is it's not legal for the county to place a different zoning designation on a piece of property than it is designated in the general plan. So the zoning has to match the general plan. I'm sure this was probably done not on purpose, but by accident in some dark GIS cave at the county, because it's a mistake. Government code requires that the zoning be consistent with the general plan designation. And an old case out of Walnut Creek, the court said, the California Supreme Court said, the general plan is the charter to which the zoning must conform. And any zoning that is not consistent with the general plan designation for a piece of property is invalid. A nice Latin word, ab initio, which us lawyers can only appreciate, means on its face, meaning that, that it is automatically an invalid zoning designation if it's not consistent with the general plan designation. And in this case, there is a general plan designation for resource conservation. And this property should be designated resource conservation, not open space. Although ultimately, I don't think it really matters because I don't believe a general plan amendment is necessary in either, no matter which this is owned. Although to be legally correct, this should be zoned resource conservation. Next slide, please. So here, here is the resource conservation zoning district. As staff mentioned earlier, a single family dwelling is allowed as is a non-habitable accessory structure, garage in this case. So the zoning for this property should be resource conservation. The general plan designation is resource conservation. And resource conservation allows this application to proceed. I think as Commissioner Deal pointed out earlier, there's, there are a few steps it would still have to go through, including a use permit for development on slopes over 30% or 25, and design approval, site plan approval for to place a garage in the location it is proposed. However, it is clear that that application should be allowed to be processed now because that application is consistent with the current designation under the general plan and Carmel Valley Master Plan for this property, because the open space zoning designation does not control its use. Next slide, please. Interestingly enough, though, and this is one I never even looked at until I looked at it the end of last week. The, the open space or O zoning district, which the property is currently zoned, would allow this application to be processed as well because it does allow a number of activities. It's including farming, grazing, and other kind of structural utility activities. And as you know, the Monterey County zoning ordinance has a catchall provision where you're allowed to make a finding that other uses are allowed if they're a similar intensity to uses that would otherwise be allowed. This garage structure would clearly be consistent or similar to structures that could be associated with farming or grazing operations. You know, I guess if someone wanted to make wine. In fact, I think at Holman Ranch, I drilled a hole into the side of a mountain for wine storage or obtained appro, I didn't do it, obtained approval for Holman Ranch to do a wine cave. So similarly, a subterranean structure of this nature would be something of similar character density or intensity to one of the allowed uses. Then the next section is one that I have never run across in 40 something years, or had occasion to employ. But this is what section 21.38.050 says. In subchapter A, it says, you're allowed to apply for a use permit for any use of O property, which is not in keeping with the purpose of this chapter, which I presume means if someone wants to do something like build a garage for a residence that isn't described as an allowed use in the zoning district, you can apply for a use permit to do so. Because I don't underst, there, there is no other logical explanation for what that paragraph means. So that doesn't mean, of course, you get to have the use permit approved. But it does, on its face and by its plain language, state that if it's something that's not an allowed use described in this district, you can apply for a use permit for it. So it's also possible to apply for a use permit for a garage under the O district if you didn't find that it was of similar character or intensity to a use that would otherwise be allowed in the district, which also, by the way, includes golf courses. Because that section allows you to do so with a use permit, not as a matter of right. So normally, in districts, you could say you build the first house as a matter of right. Well, in this district, if you want to build a garage for a house, it looks like you have the ability to apply for a use permit to do it, but not as a matter of right. So the property should, is designated resource conservation in the general plan. It should be zoned resource conservation. The open space zoning is not the correct zoning for this property. In fact, as the court in Lesher said, is invalid on its face. But even if the O zoning was correct, you could still approve, or the applicant could still apply for this use or this structure without the necessity of a general plan amendment or rezoning. Next slide, please. The other question that was raised was, is this application in the public interest? Staff correctly pointed out that provisions of state law, which require that a finding be made by the, ultimately by the board supervisors, that an application to amend a general plan is in the public interest. As you saw from the staff's presentation, the staff has conflated public interest with public access. Those are two completely different things. Public interest is a much broader category of consideration than public access. Public access can be in the public interest, but you don't have to have public access to have a rezoning or general plan amendment be in the public interest. There is no public access in Quail Meadows. This, this open space owned by the homeowners association is for the use of the homeowners association. But that issue is irrelevant to, well, I mean, it's certainly relevant to if there were public access, it could be in the public interest. But that's not a prerequisite to find this application in the public interest. It's one of those, it's one of those standards. The public interest is a standard that is one of those nice, sort of punching a marshmallow standard, where it means whatever you want it to mean, basically. Sort of like pornography, you'll know it when you see it. And in this case, public interest is something that the courts have said is within the discretion of the agents, broad discretion of the agency. And absent there being no evidence of any public interest associated with a general plan amendment, the courts don't go beyond looking at whether or not a finding of the public interest was made. And the court said, you know, this decision is within the complete discretion of the locally elected officials. So I think it's worthwhile to consider, you know, what has been found in the public interest in the past. For example, in general plan amendments, the addition of tax revenue has been found in the public interest. Because of course, development, whether it's, you know, an Amazon distribution center or additional housing or development of any kind generates additional taxes, which are then expended, hopefully, by government agencies in the public interest. Employment opportunities have been found to be in the public interest. And not too awful long ago, your board of, your commission adopted a approval of a project in Pebble Beach, where you found it in the public interest that the demolition of a house and its reconstruction with a new house was going to create tax and job opportunities and was in the public interest. Open space dedications have also been found in the public interest. And as you can see, in this case, we certainly aren't doing anything to diminish the, the value or the utility of the public interest. And I think the configuration proposed by the applicants is beneficial, both for the improved access to parcel F from the cul-de-sac at the end of the street, which, as the staff pointed out, will also provide improved fire access compared to the existing trail easement, which literally goes on the side of the hill right under the house that's been constructed there and increases the setback on the top of the lot 32, providing a broader open space connection to the parcel next door. So in this case, this project is estimated to add approximately $70,000 of tax revenue to the count of property tax revenue, which of course, the county benefits from, the state of California benefits from, and particularly the Carmel Unified School District benefits from, because of the way the Carmel Unified School District tax receipts are received. So that is clearly and unequivocally something that is in the public interest in addition to what I described earlier. So we'd respectfully request that you find that this, if you find that this general plan amendment is necessary, which I don't think it is, but if, if you believe that it is, that you find that it is in the public interest for the reasons we've talked about this morning, I would urge you to find that it is not even necessary because the property is already, has a general plan designation, which allows this application to be processed as is. The zoning needs to be brought in conformance with that general plan designation. So if any, any general plan or any rezoning is required, it's required by the county to bring it into conformance. And even if it's not rezoned, the O district does allow an application to be considered for what the applicant has applied for. So the architect, Mr. Runke, is here. If you have any questions about the invisible structure, which will only be seen by the house on the motor court. And Mr. Lundquist is here assisting us with this application as well. So thank you for your time. I'll try and answer any questions that you have, if I can.
Before we move on, do we need a 15-minute break? Or do we move on? Continue, questions? Okay. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. That's quite a mouthful, Mr. Lombardo.
I should have been a senator, right? Good filibuster.
Really?
Please, no.
Okay, can we go back to the drawing of the lot configurations proposed and existing for a minute with the zoning on them? Just speak better if I'm looking at it. Sometimes just looking answers my question. Okay, so the area currently being considered for the development of an additional garage is not part of the lot of lot two currently. So there's an ownership issue. Somehow or other, that lot line would have to be changed regardless. Is that right?
That's part of the application, correct.
And that would be done as a lot line adjustment?
Correct.
And then the lot line adjustment would include the changes shown on the slide to my right? Because that's a lot line adjustment to the.
Right, the, the.
Lot one and two lot two, both, correct?
Lot, just lot two, lot two.
Well, lot one for the 30.
Oh, sorry, correct, yes, you're correct. Lot, lot one boundary is adjusted in to allow parcel F to be connected by that corridor on the boundary.
To prevent subdivision, basically.
Yeah, yeah, alternatively, you'd have to apply for a minor subdivision to, to separate the two. But this is to prevent it from having to file a subdivision application.
Okay, so currently, lot two and lot three have different land use designations and zoning designations, right?
Correct.
So this, we would, at some point, the lot line adjustment would cross those designations. And in order for those to not be splitting the lot with lot with some sort of designation, don't we have to do something?
Well, yes and no. If you want both of them to be on, in the same desert, if you want both the current parcel two and the future boundary of parcel two to be in the same designation, yes, you would have to do a general plan amendment and rezoning. But that is not necessary in order to process an application to build the garage on the new boundary of lot, or the new configuration of lot two, because both the LDR and the RC and the O district would allow us to apply for the garage. So we don't need the general plan amendment to apply for the garage or the rezoning. The only reason you need a general plan amendment is so that the entirety of parcel two would be in the same general plan designation.
Okay, so we're, it would avoid us what we would call split zoning on a lot?
Yes.
Okay. So if I understand your suggestions, number one is that we don't need a general plan amendment at all. And that would simply consider this as a series of lot line adjustments, right? And that the combined development permit would, would be able to go forward like that?
So you're, I'm, I'm not saying yes, and I'm just saying, I'm trying to recap your. Yes, we don't need a general plan amendment to do the application of the permit for the garage or the lot line adjustments.
Okay, if we do, you're suggesting there's a mapping error. Is that true?
Unequivocally.
Okay, and that is one of the, I'm, I'm saying that because it is one of the listed items.
Yes, ma'am.
For a general plan amendment to be considered. Number three, you're suggesting that if we have to go that route, we also could do it as a public benefit due to the increased tax revenue of the proposed improvements, which are technically not part of the general plan amendment, if we did it, right?
That's one rationale, yes.
Okay. Just trying to get it clear in my head. So just to go back over it again, because it is complicated. We don't, you suggest we don't need a general plan amendment at all, unless we wish to avoid split zoning, in which case we would. You suggest that if we needed a general plan amendment, it could be, qualify under mapping error or public benefit, not public access, but public interest and public benefit. And that that would be related to the existing value of the improvements, right?
Tax revenue, yes, is a public, in the public interest.
Yeah, well, as you know me, I'm a little, I'm continually concerned about general plan amendments setting precedent for others to use similar arguments that may not be specifically relevant in those cases. But we've certainly had that happen before. But basically, to sum up, you say we can do this anyway, whichever way you want to do it.
Gotcha. Yeah, there's several ways to do it, that you could either do it with general plan amendment or not.
Thank you, I just wanted to really be sure I understood what you had brought before us. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Hartzell?
I went out to the property. I noticed that there's some construction going on there. What's going on?
That's a construction of a house. That, that, well, you can see it in the, in the right-hand view. You can see there's the home, is there, or at least last time I was there, which was a year ago, maybe, there's a home under construction on, on parcel two.
And that's, that's where you're inferring the tax revenue from? The home, the people living in the home?
Well, the, the improvements to the property generate property taxes. And the addition of this garage, if, if the commission or the county approves this garage addition, that will be additional tax revenue in addition to the tax revenue the county's getting. So the number I gave you was not the tax revenue the county's getting from the house on the property. It's the additional tax revenue the county will get from the garage that is. It's the additional tax revenue the county will get from the garage that is going to be considered, hopefully be considered by you in the future. So that's, that's revenue that would not be received unless the garage was added.
Are you here on behalf of Quail Meadows, or the homeowner, or both?
Well, the application was filed by both. I represent RISDell. But the application was filed by the HOA and RISDell together.
Got it.
And the HOA approved it, of course. You know, the HOA board approved the application, as did the Carmel Valley LUAC unanimously, which is no small feat. They don't do that easily.
And is this the first time the county's hearing your arguments on whether or not the general plan amendment is needed?
My office spoke to Mr. Spencer last week, because I literally came on board Thursday. Yeah, Dale Ellis from my office spoke to Mr. Spencer and told him that, after looking at this, that we had that concern. As I said, I apologize due to my late entrance onto this. I would have otherwise sent a letter detailing it, but I didn't have a chance between Friday and today.
One more. The trail easement. Is there any chance in the terms of that easement that there could be a loss of current access to that trail? Or that there would be less access to the homeowners association members in any way? And I ask only because I notice in being around Palo Corano that people do use it and come into the park through there.
You mean the one on the left side, the yellow trail going to the boundary?
The yellow trail that connects into other trails on parcel 3, if those had been marked.
Right. So the, it actually, relocation of the trail, which is not very well illustrated here, is going to the boundary of 2 that ends at the cul-de-sac. So it actually is on a flatter area of the lot. So, and it's not right underneath the house. It's under construction. So the, yeah, I don't, the access will be retained, maintained as open. And that's, that's the one that staff mentioned, that the homeowners association was thinking that location could provide better fire department access to the rest of parcel F than the current trail that's under easement underneath the house.
But it does currently provide access to some other trails? And that access probably won't go away?
No, it'll be the same. In other words, once, once you leave Covey Court and get to the wider part of parcel 3, it'll be the exact same location where the current trail attaches, if that's the right word, now.
Thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, I'm going to ask again, do we need a 15-minute break?
Could we just have staff respond to what--
Well, before we do, we still have open, continue with the public hearing, but I wasn't sure if we were ready for a break or not. Wanted to check. So maybe we'll go ahead and take like a five-minute, five, seven-minute break. By the time we get to where we're going and back. We'll take us about a seven-minute break. What time is it?
Questions? Any other questions from the Commission, from Mr. Lombardo? If not, we're going to go ahead and move into the public hearing. And if there's anybody in the chamber that would like to address the Commission at this Seeing none in the chambers, then do we have anybody in Zoom or any emails?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the staff to see there any clarifications, comments regarding a statement from Mr. Lombardo.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Couple of comments. This is the applicant's request that a general plan or assertion that the general plan amendment is not required is new information to staff who's presenting the project today. It appears it was provided to Craig post-distribution of the staff report and is somewhat new information. Staff isn't prepared to speak on whether or not that alternative approach is appropriate in this case. Staff is definitely welcome and happy to work with the applicant on whether or not that alternative avenue is feasible in this case. I do have some stronger concerns about the claims made that open space zoning district is not compatible with the underlying zoning designation or land use designation. So that's also something that staff can research as the zoning designation and zoning district was established through the subdivision. So I don't see how a subdivision that dedicated open space would then be rezoned resource conservation, which does allow for a residential structure. So that's a question that we can answer. And staff would still though like the Planning Commission to upon whether or not the general plan amendment is appropriate at this time or direct staff to return and work with the applicant on what they've presented today.
I think for clarification, to basically the action before the Planning Commission today is early assessment on whether or not the general plan amendment has the potential to meet the criteria that the findings would need to be made. Again, staff is happy to work with the applicant to look for an alternative pathway as appropriate, but are not prepared to weigh in on that. But since we are here and should that be the pathway necessary, we would still appreciate for everyone's efficiency and time if the Commission would like to take that action on the early assessment.
And through the chair again, I'm sorry. I would also like to clarify on the record that the applicant proposed a general plan amendment. Staff did not require the processing of this. We are simply processing the request that was made before staff.
Okay, any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Mendoza?
I don't know if it's a question. I think it'd be more in reference to a continuance to a day certain. That way staff and everybody else has time to get all the clarifications out of the way. And due to the new information that we have before us, what we heard from the applicant, that would be a recommendation and a motion I would like to make at one point or another.
Commissioner Deal?
I'm not prepared to second that motion. If you wanted to do that, I would have some other things to say before that.
Any other?
Yeah, I do. Okay, I would suggest that we come up with the assessment of a big fat maybe. Because my strong preference would be that if there's a way to not amend the general plan, that would of course be in my mind vastly preferable to processing a general plan amendment. I'm not entirely certain, given the creation of a lot with split zoning, whether that is something that we would want to do or whether it would be recommended by staff. But that could come forward with the application. With respect to the general plan amendment route, should that be deemed necessary, I'm concerned about the assertion that it is a mapping error because of the larger implications of that. If we were to look at the error, this as the difference between the land use designation and the underlying zoning, that would certainly need, in my mind, to be considered in the context of the entire area surrounding it and what impacts that might have. So if that were the route we went forward with, I'd like to see that looked at more generally. As the question of public benefit for tax revenue, that's not our area. That would be the Board of Supervisors where a general plan amendment would, I believe, go anyway. So that's not us. So basically, I think just to cut out a lot of that, if it comes forward as a lot line adjustment, I would be more comfortable with it if there's a possible way to do that. Again, making no statement about the merits of the remainder of the project with respect to the proposed development itself. I do see a reasonable benefit for switching the area that is actually intended to be open space away from the area that we, I don't know quite how, approved all this development on, that moved the driveway off the easement, which it still has an easement, and now that whole particular triangle looking thing is not very open and rather more developed. And it occurs to me that should we move towards the general plan amendment discussion, I mean, that's kind of on us because we approved that development, that maybe change in circumstances might be more appropriate from my mind in that specific case, saying that this was and is a developed area, the part that we're proposing that we add to it is not, and that that would be more useful for the open spaceness of it, if that's even a descriptor. But in general, I don't know that I would advocate for a continuance since we will have an opportunity to look at this further during the actual combined development permit. We now have kind of aired a good many of the issues and whatever route the staff came forward with. I mean, if it was possible, as I say, to bring it forward without having to look at the general plan amendment, I'd hate to hold it up considering the general plan amendment. So with respect, I would advocate providing the early assessment of, as I say, maybe. And with that kind of discussion, allowing the staff to then work with the applicant and the applicant's representative and our legal counsel and deciding what's possible and having the opportunity to look at that at the next take.
I agree with a big fat maybe. And that is particularly because I think a general plan amendment should be extraordinary circumstances, and if we can avoid it, I'd like to. I also just want to say that as far as I can tell, public interest being deferred to the elected body means it's in the interest of that elected body's constituents. And if we had to see any evidence around that, I would want to make sure we were talking a lot about something being in the interest of those constituents. Other than that, I think I've done. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Gesselman?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So I just, I tend to agree, especially with the part about not messing with the general plan if at all possible. My question though is then how would we arrive at a maybe for staff? I know denial and I know approval. I don't know maybe. So maybe, maybe staff can help us understand where we should go with this thing because I agree a maybe is what we should do. So how can we do that?
Through the chair today's action is just a determination by vote whether or not the criteria to support a general plan amendment can be made. So the Commission may vote as to whether or not there is the potential, and it sounds like there may be the potential today. So it's just a vote, there is no required approval or denial action today.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Deal?
As long as we can preserve absolute emphasis on the conditional, I would say that I would move that we may potentially have the findings for a general plan amendment. I don't know if I want to give odds, but in order to allow this to move forward with the new information and the potential of an alternate route, I would provide the assessment as staff has suggested. I would move that.
If that was a motion, I'll second that.
Kind of was.
Hey, Mr. Deal made the motion, Mr. Gesselman seconded. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Gomez?
Yeah, I agree with a maybe. I think that will focus us, my colleague said, should really be focused on seeing if we can do it under the current zoning regulations without having to go back for a general plan amendment, whether it means looking, whether it means looking exactly whether or not it's allowed or whether maybe it might mean even considering, so long as you can limit it, very limited, consider doing it overly district, but doesn't require a general plan amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Deal?
I guess to be a little more succinct, I would move that it's not a hard no.
Any other Commissioners for the good of the order? If not, all those in favor of the motion so indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries unanimous. With that, we're going to go to referrals. Says referrals 22.7, Paharo River Levy Improvements and Recovery Efforts. Staff?
Yeah, staff would like to welcome Planner Edgar Sanchez, who's joined via Zoom for this referral.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Good morning, Planning Commissioners. My name is Edgar Sanchez, and I am the project planner for this project. Today I'll provide an update on the Paharo River levy improvements and the long-term recovery efforts since our last report on December of 2024. These updates were provided by the Paharo Regional Flood Management Agency. So in terms of the levy repairs and improvements in Reach Six, the demolition and preparation for the levy and flood wall construction are progressing. The two residential parcels have been fully demolished and cleared, and the commercial property will be demolished and cleared in the coming weeks. Additionally, the Paharo Flood Management Agency expects to have the legal possession of all the remaining agricultural parcels along Reach Six by early March or in the coming weeks. And lastly, the design for Reaches Five, Four, Two, and Three are moving forward with Reaches Five completed at 30% design. A new consultant has been brought in to complete the designs up to 60% by the spring of 2025. In terms of the long-term recovery planning, Phase Two of the Paharo Disaster Assistance Program continues with applications being actively processed. And in new developments, the county has officially allocated the 1.2 million for Paharo Park repairs and replacements covering the artificial turf, the playground refurbishments, and infrastructure improvements. A formal agreement has been signed with the Paharo Sunny Mesa Community Service District to carry out these park improvements. This concludes the update, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions from the Commission? Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. In future, it would be really helpful to have a graphic showing where the reaches are. I don't keep them in my head. I know I should, but I don't. I'm wondering if there's a way to take the recovery effort, community involvement forward as the community planning process, because we really need to integrate, take advantage of community momentum, and then integrate the work that we're doing to recover with the larger development picture for that area. Could it be simultaneous? Can we somehow or other bring those together?
Through the chair. So yeah, staff has participated and been mindful at kind of multiple levels with the Paharo Recovery Effort. We have certainly, everything that we have heard through our participation and the conversations and community desires and needs that have been expressed, we have integrated those into our long-range planning activities that we have currently, our housing element, our environmental justice element, safety element. In terms of the Paharo Community Plan, yes, staff would like to harness that momentum. At this time, the Paharo Community Plan is on our long-range work program, but we do not have the staffing and resources to move that forward. The Chula Community Plan is one of the top two priorities with Paharo, and that community plan was part of the priority for this year, and we just entered into a contract with those consultants. And so the Paharo Community Plan is one of our up next top priorities as soon as there is a larger bandwidth capacity to merge those efforts. So staff is hopeful that our housing element, our safety element, NEJ element will move off of our work programs this year, which will open capacity so that another significant community planning effort such as Paharo, which is our next priority in line, could commence in the coming, in the subsequent year.
Through the chair. Who's conducting the long-term recovery planning process?
Sorry, it's a little difficult with Mr. Sanchez online. I'm trying to not talk over him. All this response since I'm here, if that's all right. Edgar, let me know if I misspeak or you can treat. So the long-term recovery planning that is underway is being led by the Department of Emergency Services in collaboration with a kind of multi-departmental effort.
So my deep concern there is that we're looking at silos, and we're going to lose a lot of momentum and potential for understanding and informing the community planning process going forward. It's not quite the same burden to organize in the long-term, and again, it says long-term recovery plan based from the Department of Emergency Services is going to necessarily have a focus that is going to, I guess focus is the right word, and it won't focus on the larger issues that could potentially significantly impact the recovery effort. So yes, I understand the bandwidth, but I also, I mean, in this particular age, I'm also thinking it's a great loss if we can't do both of those things at a time when we are already doing one of them and inform that process so that it is as wide as possible, whether you call it a community plan or not. Certainly an opportunity for HCD to bring forward some of the things we talked about, about how that recovery plan could potentially fold in with the priorities and objectives that we've outlined for community planning. I mean, I'm just, it seems crazy to me that we don't do those two things. I mean, let's go back steps, that seems crazy to me that we haven't worked on that community plan prior to flooding the area, but now that we are there, I think we have really an obligation to use whatever limited resources we have as well as we can. And looking at recovery absent larger community planning is not that. I don't know what it is, but it's not that. So I'd like to see us really work on how we could provide a more holistic and useful perspective to the long-term recovery plan that would subsequently be compatible with and potentially folded into the formal community planning process when that does occur.
Thank you. Staff receives that comment. I will note that staff is preparing its long-range work program, general plan update to come before the Planning Commission and the board. And so we will note that to bring forward as a part of the conversation, and of course in the Planning Commission's consideration of that work program, then some consideration and recommendation could accompany that as well. So we will take that under consideration and try to be prepared to speak a little more directly to that when we return.
Commissioner Gomez, I believe you have a comment or a question.
That, and I just wanted to, so I understand, I think that the long-term recovery plan really has really no relationship, right, or very minimal relationship with the actual Paharo River levy improvements and plans there with that project, right? Two separate groups.
They're separate but interrelated. I guess I would say it that way. Any kind of long-term planning for the community is very intertwined with both recovery from flood and planning for future community development, growth, and enhancement and protection is interdependent with the levy itself and it being properly improved and maintained.
Just kind of a follow-up, then does that mean that as the reach planning is being developed, and we're talking about percentages already that Edgar mentioned, right? Is that, I guess, is the Paharo Long-Term Recovery Plan being part of those conversations with PRIFMA?
Yeah, Edgar, do you want to speak, if you can, a little more directly to that question?
Yeah, both efforts are, I'd say, moving at a different pace in terms of kind of what the long-term recovery efforts are doing, are focusing more on community recovery, and the levy repairs are moving kind of at a separate pace.
Commissioner Gomez, is that?
That's it. Appreciate your response.
Commissioner Deal?
Yes, I'd appreciate unhearing what the Revitalization Committee is considering as it comes along, just to inform our own discussions. If you're talking about, as is characterized here, as a revitalized and sustainable comprehensive recovery plan, that sounds remarkably like a community plan. And, you know, I'd really, if it's not going to be done in a way that's consistent and that we can't use it, that's a waste of money. And I just really want to make sure that we don't do that and that we, as I've been saying for every single moment since 2009 at least, we owe this community more than we're giving them, and we need to get on it. And the opportunity to work with the revitalization, community-led revitalization project to pave the way or perhaps provide the opportunities with respect to things like zoning would certainly, and transportation planning, infrastructure, would certainly seem to me to be critical to act success of the revitalization plan as well as moving our own objective for a community plan per se forward.
Commissioner Hartzell?
I'm new to this project, so I'm not going to comment too deeply. Just want to identify that if you're working with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, I see the timeline they've provided, and I've also had experiences in the past where they tend to be incredibly slow, if not slower. And I know that knowing what you want when you engage with them is really important. And I just want to kind of say that for the record, that whatever the interaction is between the county and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, it probably needs to be clear, and it probably needs to be in writing. And you probably have time. So just throwing that in there.
Any other Commissioners? With that, I believe, do we need to open this to the public? Yes? So with that, anybody in the chambers, this would be the time, if you have any comments on this particular item, seeing like three or four people lining up? Just kidding, no. And anybody on Zoom or emails?
There are no additional emails and no hands up on Zoom.
Thank you very much. And then now we move on to department reports.
Hi, thank you. I just have a couple of brief department reports. One, I just wanted to provide an update from yesterday's Board of Supervisors to the Commission. The Board of Supervisors did approve the Eden Housing Affordable, 132 affordable units to be developed on county-owned property off of East Laurel. So that project is moving forward, which is great news. The county will be issuing building permits for that in agreement with the City of Salinas, so we'll be able to get those on our arena, which is regional housing needs allocation credits for those who aren't intimate with those acronyms. Also, the Board held a workshop on the housing element and was able to provide very clear direction to staff on where to go with the opportunity sites and assumptions for moving forward with our next iteration for submittal to the state. So we will be working with our consultant team to implement that direction as quickly as possible in order to get that second submittal turned around to the state. And I did just want to give a heads up that we are planning to go before the Board next week on the 18th with PLN 160851 Amendment Number Two. So that's the Blaze Engineering, the Morgan Raf, that one had been before the Planning Commission. It has been nine years trying to resolve through Coastal Commission Appeal and settlement agreements, and so that is prepared and going back to the Board just as an FYI. And we otherwise just continue to move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. What is the staff recommendation generally with respect to Blaze?
My apologies, I actually was not prepared to respond to that. Ms. Jensen is out. I will ask if Director Spencer, I see he's still there, if he would be able to speak to that. I just don't want to misspeak on the fly.
Yeah, hello, everyone. Craig Spencer, Director of Housing and Community Development. We are recommending approval of an amendment to the Blaze Engineering Coastal Development Permit and General Development Plan that would remove the one employee housing unit that was on the second floor. It would include some tree screening, retaining wall, and a couple other minor modifications to the previously approved design. With those amendments, the core challenges would be settled. There is an agreement in writing between the two parties that if this moves forward, it will resolve the issues surrounding the lawsuit. So this would potentially be the last time we have to bring this forward.
Thank you. I just know I'm going to get questions. I just know I'm going to get questions, so I really appreciate that.
And with that, is there any other department reports? I'm returning the meeting at 11:23 a.m. Have a wonderful rest of the day.